Please stand for the National Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead with roll call.
Okay, we're going to do a roll call. And I apologize in advance, my voice is going in and out, so I'm going to be as loud as I can. Paul Cassidy.
Here.
Tanya Hogan.
Here.
Jerry Golka.
Here.
John DeBoyer.
I'm here.
Mark Richard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Beverly Rose.
Here.
We'll go to public comments.
Before we do that, Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. One I discuss manor consortium reconciliation.
That's in between meetings?
No, that's its own agenda item.
Oh, okay.
That's a motion.
What's a motion for?
To discuss manor consortium reconciliation.
I thought we ruled on that. I thought we voted on that.
And I'd like to discuss it.
Are we going to take a vote after you discuss it?
Well, that's up to you, but I have some information that I'd like to share with the board.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'll second.
I just think that's something we should talk about, you know.
Well, I'd kind of like to know.
Share with everybody before.
I think we should discuss.
Well, we can't, I mean, we can't meet and discuss unless we're in a meeting.
Well, you can share, you can share stuff.
Yeah, we can.
You can share stuff and you can come into Paul.
What is it you would like to discuss?
I think we have a motion and a support. Can we vote on it?
No, we can have it up for discussion. What do you think we ought to discuss?
I'd like an item to discuss it.
What is the topic of your discussion?
I just told you, it's the manor consortium reconciliation.
That's it?
It's discussion about it.
So what is its specific?
Can we vote on the motion?
I'm asking you, what, as part of the discussion, what is it that you specifically need?
Well, when we get to that agenda item, I guess we can all find out.
You want to keep it a secret?
Yeah, it's a big secret until then.
Okay.
It's kind of like OHM contracts.
Yeah. Okay, we'll put it right up there with the OHM contract.
We still have a motion on the board, on the table.
Got a board on it.
We're going to deal with it.
Well, do you want to take a vote? Do a roll call.
Maureen Bory.
No.
Mark Richard.
Yes.
Paul Cassidy.
No.
Jerry Golka.
No.
Beverly Rose.
Yes.
Tanya Hogan.
Yes.
John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll go to public comments. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. Relative to the OHM study, there were Phase Ones and Phase Twos. So the Phase Two that we're talking about was Clay Township, and here's the contract right here. Phase One was done by HIDA. HIDA paid $61,000. And you know what we got as taxpayers for $61,000? Nothing. You can't find the Phase One feasibility study on the website anywhere. So when you sit there and talk about Phase Two, how does it affect the residents? It doesn't because it's Phase One. We got nothing. Phase Two, this was supposed to be paid for by the mileage, according to HIDA's own website. Now, obviously, the mileage was overwhelmingly rejected. When I say overwhelmingly, only 134 residents on the island voted for it. There are 930, 950 voters on the island, so that's less than 15%. But as you can see, this whole contract says Mr. Paul Cassidy's supervisor, so it's not just for the island now. So according to him, 134 people are more important than the 7,700 taxpaying residents of Clay Township and the 8,500 residents total. That is very bad when we have a situation where just 2% is getting their special treatment, 134 voters. And why is this happening? Well, Cassidy, in January 1st, was quoted in an article saying he wants to streamline government. I mean, when you start bypassing the voters and bypassing the board, you're not streamlining a democracy, you're causing a tyranny. That's not very good. And then lastly, just from my own opinion, I want to know if HIDA was involved, because HIDA says there's no meetings, there's nothing to talk about. Well, if they're working on a Phase Two feasibility study, that sounds like it's something to talk about. And if they're not working on a Phase Two feasibility study, considering they paid for the Phase One feasibility study, then they're just incompetent. So I'd like to know, is HIDA being nefarious or incompetent? But in conclusion, the board needs to stop this OHM garbage. Thank you.
I'm reading this statement for Kristi Hiltonan. This is my statement to address the egregious and blatantly fabricated lies that were told at the last township meeting by Treasurer Golka, trustee and Bory, and the current board's group of supporters on social media insinuating that I sabotaged the integrity of the office during my last week as Clay Township's treasurer. The audit will reveal that there were established processes and procedures being followed during my time in office. The process was account reconciliation completed monthly by exporting reports out of BSNA and extracting the needed data by use of Excel. Monthly treasurer reports were created by using this data and supplied to the Board of Trustees as well as the DDA Board. All paperwork, all work papers and bank statements were packaged for review by the clerk as well as the proposed month-end general ledger entries. The clerk reviewed the package and then posted the proposed entries. When the package was given back, the reconciliation was entered in BSNA, and the month was closed and the reports were printed and put in a file. The monthly files went into the cabinet in the office for audit preparation. Prior to my departure in November of 2024, I reconciled the month of October and produced a final treasurer's report for the Board of Trustees and the township's auditing firm. I also forwarded all general ledger activity and substantial support to the township's auditing firm for the then-current fiscal year, July 1 through mid-November 2024. Between myself and the clerk, all general ledger entries that could be posted were posted. On my last day in office, I requested that a police officer review the contents of my office prior to my departure, to in fact view the filing cabinets were still filled with the township files and documents. I requested that all files on my computer be backed up on the township server in case accusations were made by the incoming board in the future. To reiterate, all bank reconciliation files, spreadsheets and work papers were stored in two servers and physically printed in file folders in the cabinet. My process was to print all spreadsheets, bank statements and supporting documentation monthly and compile it in an order in a folder for review by the clerk. When it was reviewed and signed by the clerk, it was returned to me. With the month-end reconciliation entries posted, then I would transfer the reconciliation into the township software program, BSNA, and close out the reconciliation electronically as well. If the current treasurer cannot find the evidence of reconciliation electronically or the printed approved in file folders in the cabinet in his office, then he should be able to log into the account reconciliation tab of their software program to pull all the necessary starting numbers, such as outstanding deposits and transit and outstanding checks to begin reconciliation. I will conclude by saying that from the day I took office until the day that I left, the township's financials were my top priority, which has been proven by township audits and state review. Reconciliation was done timely, various reporting to the state was done timely, reporting to the Board of Trustees and the DDA Board was done timely. I personally monitored all township funds, safely invested all township funds, and thoroughly reviewed all township bank statements monthly, and I reviewed all township bank transactions daily. For me, being the Clay Township treasurer was a full-time job, which I enjoyed and willingly took very seriously. There are no missing treasury files or spreadsheets. And at this time, Jerry, based on your derelict of duty, I would ask that you resign.
Well, there's your due time. Thank you for your tremendous service.
Bills payable, legal fees of $5,110 for Addus Law Firm. If I'm correct, an ordinance isn't something the supervisor can just create and push through. There's an actual legal process to be followed. A board must vote to direct that it be drafted, decide who drafts it, and set limits on costs, including legal fees. Without that vote, the supervisor has no authority to spend township resources. The first I heard about a ferry ordinance was at a budget meeting, but I do not recall the supervisor making a motion to consider an ordinance, nor do I recall that the board actually voted on whether or not they wanted a ferry ordinance drafted. But it appears he simply drafted one himself, posted it publicly, and the only vote the board took was to adopt it, and it failed. If township paid attorney time or staff resources were used before that board vote, that's unauthorized expenditure of public funds. Same with legal advice. If the supervisor wants to bill attorney time to the township, it requires specific board authorization. Approved if needed does not mean unlimited use at any cost. So tonight, I'm asking the board on the public record, was there ever a motion and vote authorizing the supervisor's outside attorney to work on the OHM contract or the ferry ordinance? If so, was it before the work started, and have itemized bills been provided? If not, do not pay until you are certain the township is responsible for these legal bills. Apparently, Jerry loves car shows and music so much that he was willing to take a chance riding on a ferry that he constantly complains about. But how is that $10 ferry fee a legit reimbursement for a treasurer? Then we have almost $1,700 in conference expenses for him. The BSNA one is in North Carolina, and the expenses for conference owning. Soon, he'll be asking for travel and accommodation costs. BSNA, I call BS on that one. Another cost of almost $1,000 for a retreat at the Bavarian Inn. Jerry, seeing that you just cost the taxpayers $22,000 to have a CPA firm do your work, I'd say your retreat started the day you took office. Board, please consider this request to waste more taxpayer dollars very carefully. Regarding the OHM feasibility study, I hope tonight we finally have a serious public discussion. This contract was signed illegally without board authorization on December 30th. Then a stage vote on an expired contract that was never ratified on March 6, 2025. You have all the facts. The question is, what are you going to do about it? I've sent you my updated timeline and FOIA materials, and I've given the same packets to citizens so they now know what you know.
Julie, I'm a Clay Township resident. I came here to speak a little bit about Jerry Golka, our treasurer, before his treasury report tonight. Also, the bill's payable. I've asked to come here to ask Jerry Golka to step down from his position. Any job that involves working with money, especially that of others, requires an honest individual with trustworthy characteristics, and he's proven to our community that that is not him. Since he decided to run for this current position, he's been deceitful to the public, waiting almost 10 months before divulging to this board and township residents that he hasn't performed a single bank reconciliation thus far. I asked the board to have Mr. Golka pay for his latest $12,000 bill himself, not us. Also, would like to add that township residents shouldn't cover any OHM bills related to the feasibility study. That contract was signed in December before Paul ever took office. Additionally, Mr. Addus shouldn't be paid by the township for any involvement in the bogus ferry ordinance. That bill should be paid by the few who created it, as the full board was not aware of this ordinance. Thank you.
Hello, Emily, Bar Harbor, Harson's Island, and I'd like to address the treasurer. I understand and respect that there is a learning curve for every job, but after eight or nine months of not being able to do your job, I believe it's time to admit defeat and step down. Thank you.
First, I would like to thank you for last having the OHM come and speak to us. Hopefully, we get some answers for Phase One from the HIDA study that was spent $250,000 grant money on, and having, and I'd like to, and the Phase Two, Clay Township spending $150,000 on a ferry study. Second, the request for $1,700 for Jerry's retreats is utterly bizarre. Jerry, you have not done your job in eight months. You've been given an assistant, $10,000, $12,000, and you have $4,000 in your budget for education. You constantly blame the previous treasurer. Everything you needed to reconcile the bills was left for you. Third, we cannot approve the $7 million bond proposal until you get your house in order. Will you be in charge of managing the $7 million? This is why, Jerry, I respectfully ask that you step down and let someone who is capable of managing our township, township money, step in. I would also like that you return your salary since you have not performed your duties as treasurer. I also place a large blame on Paul Cassidy, as you are the overseer of this township. You had to have known Jerry was not doing his job in eight months. My concern for paying $5,000 to Adidas firm for HIDA's attorney, who was HIDA's attorney and Paul Cassidy's personal attorney, paying for the ferry ordinance that Paul said you were drawing up. I don't know why we're paying Adidas firm for this. And then $350 for the ferry issue, I don't understand all this. The OHM insurance, I'd like that all explained. Another concern is paying $2,000 for Adidas Law Firm for the sandpit right-to-farm dispute. Maureen, using township money to fight her personal vendetta against the sandpit is totally wrong. Because of her relationship with the owner of the sandpit, she should have recused herself from the whole issue. The township inspector explained over and over at the June meeting that everything had been done properly at the sandpit. Let Maureen pay Adidas Law Firm. The total, like, the total amount for this is almost $9,000 in unnecessary spending, wrong spending. Thank you.
I'm just here to respectfully request that Jerry Golka steps down. He's unfit. We can't have a treasurer that has no idea how much money we have in our accounts. And, you know, that's it.
Jan Damati, 368 Greenwood Street, Clay Township. I find it extremely troubling that our treasurer actually went to the school board and did his best to get a very beloved coach fired. This coach has helped students, parents love him, all the kids love him. Is it part of his duty to do this? I find it very troubling that he takes the time to do that, but our books are still not balanced. I see something wrong with this, and especially if you knew Joe Garten's such a great guy. Why do you want to get somebody fired because they beg to differ with you politically? What is this? Thank you.
We'll move on to bills payable. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $177,055.32, 8/11/25.
So I have a question on education and training.
There's no support. Almost there's, do we got good support first?
Yeah, I mean, support. We don't, I'm going to do it anyways.
Well, I'll support it. Go ahead.
Okay. Education and training, page one, to a car show, $10 for a ferry ticket. I have no idea that we were paying for, to go to Harson's Island for a car show.
Mark, it was to make sure that the stage was open for the concert that was going on. That's what they.
We paid for music in the park there.
But we already had Brandy set up to do that. She was all set up. She had her ticket, she had already done all of that, so I just, like, I'm not sure why you went either.
Isn't that our parks and rec directors?
Yeah, and Brandy had everything under control.
So I got a couple of questions.
I'm really not.
I'm sorry, Mark.
I'm really not done yet.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sure you're going to chime in here pretty soon, so. The registration for Bavarian Inn, two-day, for $182. And we have one, North Carolina, for $750. Then you had a conference call from MTA for $399, and a treasurer's retreat for $367. Normally, when a member of the board and the administration staff go to training, they come before the board and get permission. I don't see permission on that one. I can go down the list, and he's got a few more in there, I believe. I don't see permission for that. So we got to rein this in somewhere along the line. Come before the board, if any of the people going to from this, from this department or any department in the township that's going to go to a training class, needs to come before the board and tell us why they're going to the training class and what they hope to achieve. I don't see any of that. And when they come back, they should send it here and tell us what they learned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think it's outrageous, someone just being in a job for eight months, nine months now, going on a retreat already for half a month.
That's a training retreat. It's for training.
It says retreat.
It's MTA, and it's, it's a retreat for training. And there's a, there's a weekend for you if you want to go. There's a trustee.
I wouldn't go. My job is here.
Well, you maybe learn some things if you went.
I don't have to learn anything. I've been here for eight years. Maybe I can teach you a few things. Maybe you ought to listen to me a little bit more.
Yeah, so not only was this not approved by the board, but it looks like Jerry has already registered at all four of these conferences, and you're asking for reimbursement. Is that correct?
Yes. It's just like in the, in the spring, Tanya and myself went to an MTA meeting, and we were reimbursed for that.
I understand, but normally, any conference or training is approved by the board, the township writes the check, and the, and the board member goes to the conference. Not register, hear board reimburse me, no approval. That's not how it works.
Did we vote on Tanya and you in the spring?
No, you probably should have.
I guess we should have brought it up there.
Maybe we should take a vote and see.
So I got, I got another question, though. Is North Carolina the closest place that you can get smart on this stuff?
Yeah, it's a BSNA.
North Carolina?
Yes.
And I'm assuming there'll be meals and lodging in mileage to come later?
Well, not meals, but lodging and mileage. I mean, I take care of my own meals.
So we just keep tacking it on? So here's my concern, as I look at these dates, November, I'm sorry, September 30th through October the 9th, approximately, these four conferences take place. At our last board meeting, didn't you tell me that one of your office help is going to be out for six months and you're going to be shorthanded?
I didn't say six months. I said probably six weeks.
Six weeks?
Yeah.
You don't think that's going to be an issue for you to be gone three weeks?
No.
And isn't that our audit time?
No.
It's not our audit time?
Our audit time is by the end of the year. We're.
Meh, I don't think that's quite accurate. I do have some more questions on a different issue, on a different bill. So that, under Addus Law Firm, the $350 that was touched upon for ferry issues, what are our ferry issues? Do we have ferry issues?
Yeah, we had a few.
We do?
We did, but Ms. Rose took care of all those, so. Dealing with.
I'm cheaper than $350, tell you that.
You're cheaper than $350, though?
Yeah, I sold that in two days.
We'll have to keep that in mind next time. And of course, the, you know, the ferry ordinance, I don't remember this board voting on hiring Addus to write up a ferry ordinance. In fact, I think, Mr. Supervisor, you made the statement that you drew that ordinance.
I did draw it up, and I had him review it, as I did the other law firm.
I don't remember, I don't remember the board ever discussing that.
Because I didn't want to be accused of sending him money. Well, you know, I do have authority to spend some money without board approval.
I see that.
And that's what I did.
You guys really have a lot of authority to spend money without board approval.
Yep, just like you do.
No, I don't, nor would I. And I, one other question, I have $762 for music in the park for signs and sponsor signs. Does that come out of the sponsor money that we receive for?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question on decking. It's in the red, $10.54. What was that about? From Lumberjacks?
I think that was for the pier, Mark.
Why would it be a deficit? I don't understand that question anyways.
It was probably a credit.
A return?
Yeah. Yeah, usually when they're like that, we get credits back and they show up like that. We're not in a deficit, we're all up to, everything with lumberjack is taken care of. They just show up differently when there's going to be a credit.
Okay. One other question on between meetings.
It's not area.
Well, that's on the consent agenda.
We're doing bills payable right now. You know, I went over and talked to Jake.
There's way too many, there's way too many issues on this, this agenda with costs from attorneys, administrators going for training, ferry costs, auto show costs at the Harson's Island, way too many, way too many. So I'm surprised.
Don't pay it.
There's even on there. You got $5,1700.
Why is?
That I know nothing about, and I'm sure the other, the other members of the board don't know nothing about, except for the people that did this. So it's getting, it's getting out of hand, getting ridiculous. We need to know what's going on. You want, you're talking about transparency? I don't see it. I don't see it at all.
All right, we have a motion.
Oh, I did get a feasibility study, but I did ask them to come here and give us a presentation on it. I haven't seen that yet.
Where are they?
I think I can fill you in, Mark.
I don't want you to fill me in, I want them to fill me in.
No, I can fill you in.
We got a cost on this?
Yeah. Yeah, we do.
We'll put that for.
A contract cost that we voted to approve. That's what we've got, Mark. You want to not pay them? Let's not pay them.
No, no, let's not pay them, Mark. Let's reach the contract. Let's not pay them. We already paid them. No, we haven't. Did we pay them?
No. I pulled all the bills from bills payable that were for OHM until we had more information from them.
Let's not pay them until they come in here and give us a presentation.
That is why I pulled them.
That's what we contracted for. Get them in here, get them in here, just a little change and just pay them. That's what we contracted for. I can answer any question you have.
So does that mean they're not going to come here?
I didn't ask them to come, I bought their book, I figured.
I do have a contact from receiving their bills, and I would be more than happy to reach out to see if they would come to a meeting.
You can each call and talk to them, right? We can call them and talk to them.
I don't care.
Now the study's done.
You can call them anytime you want, Mark. You got any questions? You call them.
Well, I think the concern is, is we've been asking over and over again to hear from them, and nobody has heard from them.
And well, Mr. Supervisor, God forbid that we as trustees do our job.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, you do your job.
I said God forbid that we do that.
What do you think our job?
What are you saying, that we're, we're not doing our job?
Maybe you should read what our job definition is.
There you go.
That's what we're trying to exercise every day we come into this place.
Listen to the people.
We going to have a vote on the bills payable or not?
Call it, you're the chair.
You're the chair, so you tell me.
Let's call the vote. Roll call.
John DeBoyer.
No.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Richard.
No.
Paul Cassidy.
Yes.
Jerry Golka.
Yes.
Beverly Rose.
No.
Tanya Hogan.
No.
The supervisor's report's next. All I can say is this, you know, people are allowed to come up here and say whatever they want. They're not constrained to have to tell the truth. Many of them don't. It doesn't matter. I'm not speaking for the people in the crowd here, because I know where they're at. I'm speaking to the public that might watch this. People on the board aren't constrained to tell the truth. Mr. DeBoyer said at the last meeting specifically that that ferry ordinance was ruled illegal, and that's not true.
The judge put a stay on it. The judge put a stay on it.
Is that the same? Is that the same?
Well, it may be.
Well, you should maybe spend more time worrying about people's poop.
You know what? I don't think you should attack anybody on credibility of all people.
Yeah, well, I'm attacking you. You can have all your champions, you can be the champions for these people, that's fine with me.
No, that's not what I'm here for.
But the fact that.
You ought to start running the township for a change.
Yeah, right. Mr. Bryson, please.
Oh, here we go, throwing everybody out that you don't like.
I'm just asking you not to speak out of turn. You had a right to come up and talk. You can come at the end of the meeting and talk. All right? So, you know, I have nothing further to say. Give the treasurer's report.
So, I just want to ask, nobody gets paid on bills payable, do they?
No, nobody's getting paid. Tell the police here and the fire, they're not getting paid.
That's not on bills payable.
Payroll's not out there.
Who's ever supposed to get paid?
They're getting paid.
All right, let's go to the treasurer's report.
Okay, let me be unequivocally clear about the situation I inherited. A complete breakdown of treasury, you know.
You know what? Show a little respect, all right?
Exactly.
Like you do?
Yeah, like I do. Like I do, I don't speak when other people are speaking.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Let me be unequivocally clear about the situation I inherited. A complete breakdown in treasury operations due to inexcusable negligence in the transition process. My deputy receives zero training in bankrupt conciliations, investments, or disbursements. Critical financial records were kept in personal spreadsheets that disappeared when the previous treasurer left. This wasn't just poor planning, it was a declaration, that put Clay Township finances at a serious risk. I refuse to let this continue. That's why I brought in Manor Consortium, a top-tier municipal accounting specialist firm, to forensically reconstruct months of missing financial records, implement bulletproof reconciliation systems that should have existed years ago, provide independent verification that will, that every taxpayer dollar is properly accounted for. This isn't about assigning blame, it's about fixing what's broken with decisive action. While others failed to plan for this transition, I am taking responsibility for implementing real solutions that will protect Clay Township finances now and for future administration. The risks is manual reconciliation, fraud, no automated audit trails for payment deposits, human error. One in five manual reconciliations contain errors, that's from AFP Global Stats, compliance failure, increased audit penalties and finding, operational costs, 15 to 20 staff hours a month wasted on spreadsheet matching, strategic blind spots. Every hour spent on spreadsheet matching is an hour not spent on more high-level work such as strategic budgeting, community improvement, project, or grant opportunities. System improvements and process, partner, Manor Consortium and municipal financial specialists will, we're doing automatic reconciliation, deposit creations for instant bank matching, check clearing integration, future-proof transparency, all data centralized for success treasurers, real-time reporting capabilities, qualified benefits, 67% faster than month enclosures per BSNA case studies, $12,000 a year saved in staff reconciliation hours, and audit-ready record at all times.
All right, you have another report on the finances?
Oh, yeah.
You've shared that with everyone?
Yep. DDA Downtown Development Authority, $536,177,000. We're waiting on a check from the county for the exercise equipment for $175,000. That should be coming in a couple of weeks to add to this. Our general fund is $3,122,947. Fire Department Fund, $499,841,000. Police Department has $1,471,310. Parks and Rec Fund, $595,000. We're waiting on a check there on the playground equipment from the county. Oaklawn Cemetery Fund, $35,872. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, $3,106. And ARPA funds were minus $1,732.49. That needs to be moved to fire because the pumper was not 100% paid for by the ARPA funds, and it was moved by mistake. Sewer Fund has $1,306,811. Water Fund, $4,723, $4,723,965. Harrison Island Sewer, the LG Wheel, $630,757.
So, are these reconciled numbers or unreconciled numbers?
Unreconciled numbers.
I assume that. I find it incredible that you have the audacity to attack the former treasurer for inefficient time spent reconciling books when you went eight months not reconciling books at all.
John, I want you to come to my office next week, and I want to show you what I have. I want to show you. No, I want you to. You never come into the office and sit down and talk with me.
Jerry, for starters, when I come in, you're never here, okay?
No!
And guess what? I'm fully aware of what you have. In fact, I think I know more about what you have than you know what you have. Yes. We'll talk about it here soon, okay?
I would like to say that the deputy, it is not the deputy treasurer's responsibility.
Excuse me, I'm the deputy, can I say something?
You sure can.
You sure can.
No, no. I'm not giving her. I'm not giving her.
Hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. We can bring in a engineer for the supervisor's report, but we can't let the deputy treasurer talk?
Well, who said that? How do you learn to talk?
I can wait till public comments if you don't want to talk.
Come on up, Anita.
I, I'm just going to say, first of all, Jerry, I don't appreciate you telling everybody here without speaking to me that I'm not trained to do bank reconciliations and investments. It is not my job to do bank reconciliations and investments, it's your job.
I know it's my job.
Okay? I'm not done, okay? It's not my job, it's yours. I am doing my full-time job, I'm doing the deputy treasurer's job, and I'm doing at least 80% of the treasurer's job. So, if you feel that the previous treasurer was that bad and not doing her job, which I strongly disagree with you, because I worked with her for eight years, then you must not feel that I'm doing the deputy's job. And if you feel that way, and you would like a new deputy, you feel free to get another deputy, and I will stay on as a full-time employee.
That's not, that's not what I'm saying. Didn't explain, no? What I'm explaining is, okay, I worked 38 years at AAA, okay? I, I, let me explain, okay? I couldn't walk into a State Farm office and go and sell insurance for them without knowing their programs, how to do the job. It's all different, okay? I come walking in with spreadsheets that I don't understand, half a BSNA, half and half integrated, okay? And I'm not blaming my deputy, but my deputy couldn't even help me with these reconciliations so I can figure out what this township, how they did it.
Did you ever ask her?
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
What was her answer?
She don't do reconciliations, she wasn't trained to do reconciliation. I'm not blaming her for that.
When Christie started, she hasn't anybody trained her either.
Yeah, she, they had accountants come in.
They had, they had a company.
Yeah, they did.
They had a company doing reconciliations.
How do you know that?
Okay, but even if, even if she did reach out for help.
You just made a statement, Mr. Supervisor. How do you know that they had accountants come in and train our former treasurer?
Yep.
You know that for certain?
I said they had accountants come in to help.
I think that's one of those statements you were talking about earlier that's not quite accurate.
You've got it. All right, we'll go to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? We have no motion on the consent agenda, we'll move on to unfinished business.
Can I?
Well, before we do, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, I got a question.
Surprise, surprise.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the reports the board approved? Checks the in-between meetings, the meeting minutes for the Board of Trustees meeting from 7:28, 25?
I'll support.
So, on the Manor Consortium, 5261, which is described as ARPA and reconciliation, what is the dollar breakdown for those two items?
Did you, did you think we, that all the records were in front of us, John?
Well, we approved $10,000.
You would have liked to have come in earlier.
I know.
And ask these questions. We could have prepared.
So, the reason I ask, if you remember, we approved $10,000 for ARPA.
I think it was up to 12, wasn't it?
No, no.
It was 10.
Originally, ARPA, all the other things that Jerry couldn't do, and then at the last meeting, you guys approved, not me, you guys approved $12,000 for the reconciliation portion. So, I want to know how much of that, 5261, is ARPA for Jerry, and how much is reconciliation for Jerry, so I can keep track of what we're spending, God forbid.
And I have a question, because they were supposed to be assisting with the budget. We agreed to have them assist with the budget.
They did.
Okay, I just haven't seen a bill for that yet, so.
So, you're telling them what the breakdown is?
That's part of the budget.
I'm questioning what we're sending it on.
Meetings. Isn't that, the meetings was for the budget?
Because the meetings, you just said ARPA and reconciliations, but you didn't mention meetings.
We approved money for two different things, and there's two different items there.
There's three items, you're not reading it.
But two of them fall into separate.
It's ARPA, meetings, and reconciliation, there's three.
Right, so meetings and ARPA would fall into one, if you remember, right? And reconciliation would fall into the $12,000 that was approved. And I'm asking you, how much is with each? I'll come into your office and get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Set an appointment with me.
Let's talk.
What time you think?
I haven't talked with you.
What time you think, Jerry?
You gave me a 10.
7 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll meet you 7 o'clock.
I'll be there.
I'm here at 7 o'clock.
What day? 7 a.m., 7 p.m., what day?
So, BLD Services, $153,964, payment number one for sanitary system improvement. So, I'm assuming that's the contract that has been approved and they're working currently, right?
Correct.
So, we're making a payment, is this coming out of, what's the line item that we're paying that out of?
We paid that out of engineering. As you can see, we have another PCE bill that we need to, another PCE project, and I feel as a board, we need to decide where we're pulling all these funds from.
But, okay, so, really, I don't think we should be paying that out of engineering. That's a contractor payment, isn't it?
Yes.
Shouldn't that be coming out of?
Well, we could take it out of a couple places, and that's what I think we should discuss as a board, where we should be taking all these new bills with PCE for all these new projects.
Well, my question is, is we don't, I know we're here to talk about bonding tonight.
Yes.
But we don't even have our schedule for what we're paying out of fund balance, what we're paying out of water, what we're paying out of sewer. Are we adjusting the capital improvement charge?
We're hoping to discuss that tonight.
Okay, that's great, I'm happy to hear that. But we're paying a bill right now that we haven't even figured that out yet.
Which I can adjust that, like, I can change that GL number anytime. I do have two in mind that we could use, but I thought maybe we should discuss where we're pulling from. We could always pull from capital outlay over $5,000, or capital improvement over $5,000. But, I don't want it to, I can't solely sit on my shoulders to decide that.
No, I understand that. I just didn't know where it was coming from, because it doesn't show in here.
That's because I didn't put one there yet.
Well, and my concern was, we haven't even put our, basically, our payment schedule for all these projects in place yet.
Where do you want to pull it from, Paul?
Now, if we pay it out of sewer fund balance, until our bonding comes through, or however, I don't know what your thoughts were, Paul.
And to pay out of fund balance?
Okay.
So, this should come out of sewer fund balance?
Until we got the bonding through.
Okay.
So, the sewer fund balance.
All right, so far as the consent agenda is concerned, you're going to take a vote?
So, the Manor Consortium is already paid, that was an in-between, that's already been paid, right?
Correct.
Okay.
He said, "Take the vote."
Oh, I didn't hear him, sorry. Mark Burchard?
One question on, you know, I have not seen any invoices whatsoever from Addus Law Firm, and we're paying them to attune them.
Well, that was, those were on bills payable, and we didn't, we turned bills payable down for the law firm, was on bills payable.
I still haven't seen them. No.
This is the in-between meetings and the consent agenda?
No.
Paul Cassidy?
No.
Jerry Golka?
No.
Beverly Rose?
No.
Tanya Hogan?
No.
John DeBoyer?
No.
Maureen Pori?
No.
Okay, we'll go to unfinished business. Mr. Roach is here from a company that's providing us with information, and hopefully, John, he can answer all your questions. Can you come on up, Mr. Roach?
Wonderful.
Good evening. We also have a bond counselor here, Emily Bar. So, once again, my name is Bill Roach, I'm serving as municipal advisor to the township on the bond issue. I've worked with you going back probably about seven years on all your other financings. The proposal that we have today is to approve a bond issue of $6 million. I should have grabbed my paperwork, let me grab that, hold on, sorry.
It's not to exceed $6,845,000.
And that is going to be to sell capital improvement bonds, which have the township limited tax, both faith and credit behind it, and then that will be broken out between the sewer project and the water project. We are looking at putting into these projects a cash contribution from the sewer system for approximately $780,000, and then the sewer bond portion of it will be $3,369,500. And then the water bonds, we're looking at a cash contribution from the water system, approximately 3.2, and the grant monies that are available of 2.4, and that will result in a bond issue for the water project of $3,930,000. The estimated debt service for the sewer bonds is going to be approximately, bear with me, $230,000 a year, and that is at an assumed interest rate of 5%. We try to run the numbers on a conservative basis. If you were to sell today, your interest rate would probably be somewhere between 4% and 4.5%. So, there's some legal room in there. Once again, we try to be conservative. On the water system, the estimated debt service is going to be a little bit higher, because obviously it's a bigger bond issue, and we're looking at about $315,000 a year in debt service for the water system. We ran a number of different options for the township to amortize the debt. We ran a 30-year bond issue, a 25, a 20, and a 15, and it was settled on a 20-year amortization, because by going now 25 or 30 years, the annual payment did not decrease very much, but your interest expense increased substantially. So, there was very minimal benefit for the system and the ratepayers to try to stretch it out over a longer period. So, the recommendation was to go with a 20-year amortization, and that will also result in a lower interest rate than a 25 or a 30-year transaction. The resolution, and I'll let Emily cover that, we had talked about where is this money coming from for these projects? You can obviously use the money in the water and sewer system towards the projects, and the resolution that was adopted back in May 28th, day after Memorial Day, the notice of intent allows you to reimburse yourself for any monies that you spent on this project from the proceeds when they're delivered. from the proceeds when they're delivered. Assuming the resolution is passed tonight, the plan is, we have a conference call scheduled tomorrow morning with the supervisor to go over the time schedule, talk about the, what is called the official statement, which is the marketing document that we would use. That will be put in better shape and sent out to Standard and Poor's either late this week or early next week to request a bond rating on the bond issue. That'll take about three to four weeks. There will be a conference call with treasurer and supervisor, with rating analyst from S&amp;P. They'll issue a rating, and right now the township is rated AA, which is an excellent rating, and that's one of the reasons why your interest rate will be a little bit better on the transaction. The plan is to take competitive bids for the bonds, right now at 11 o'clock on September 24th. If everything is approved tonight, we'll review the bids as they come in, make sure they're in compliance with the documents that are being prepared and approved today, and that they meet the market requirements. Assuming they do, we would recommend the township accept them, and a form will be prepared for signature from the treasurer or the supervisor to sign to authorize, award the bond sale to the lowest bidder. That said, we would have cash in the construction funds, there'll be two construction funds that'll have to be set up for the sewer and the water projects. The bond proceeds will be delivered, and you can reimburse yourself for any money spent, and your project's funded and ready to go.
So what would be the timeline, Bill, from, if it's approved tonight, to money in the account to pay contractors?
We are, oh, well, you can start paying your contractors today.
And reimburse, if we have enough?
Correct, yeah.
But what's the timeline of the bonding process? How long does it take?
Once again, we're scheduling a sale September 24th. It'll take us a couple weeks to get that, what's called the official statement, similar to a prospectus in the corporate world for stocks. We'll get a couple weeks to prepare that, submit it over to S&amp;P, they're looking at about a three-week turnaround for the rating, and we want to have that rating in hand before we print and mail the official statement. So once we have that, then we would print and mail the official statement about the 16th or 17th of September, and your bids are going to be taken on September 24th. Then it takes a couple weeks to prepare the bond forms, get the legal documents all finalized. So we would close, and you would have money in the bank probably October 8th or 9th. I apologize, I forget the date I have on the schedule.
No, that's good.
But yeah, it'll be early October, you'll have cash in the bank, and once again, you'll be able to reimburse yourself from the bond proceeds for any money that is utilized from the sewer or the water fund to fund construction as you are going along.
And that's from 60 days before the resolution you adopted in May? So that reimbursement goes back to that starting point? Anything you've spent on the projects through to when you receive the bond proceeds is reimbursable from those bond proceeds?
And Bill, those numbers you gave us, the 230 a year and the 315, that's principal and interest?
Correct. And once again, that's both at a 5% interest rate, which is very conservative.
So just to explain a little bit more, the bond authorizing resolution that you have in front of you, this is the last step that the board would take? So you took that first step back in May, authorized publication of a notice, the township published a notice indicating its intent to issue bonds. This is the next step, where you authorize the supervisor, the treasurer, and the clerk to take whatever steps are left to get the sale of the bonds, the way that Bill just described them, sign all the closing documents, establish the accounts that are needed to pay for the projects, those sort of steps that's laid out in that authorizing resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Well, the resolution says not to exceed 6%, but you're saying 5% is what you're, but you're giving yourself a little wiggle room?
Correct.
The authorizing resolution sort of puts it at the, like, this is the absolute cap, not the goal.
Doing this for 44 years, I've seen a lot of things change fairly quickly in the market. So if it were something, you know, there's tragedy or where it affect interest rates, and it did exceed 6%, then we could not finish the project, we'd have to come back to the board and redo the resolution and get approval from the board to go out back to the market. But we do try to set those caps, so that it's, you know, it's not too high, but not too low.
Did you figure out how much it's going to cost each resident on the water?
We have, we talked about it.
Well, I mean, there's, you know, spitball in it. One of the things we did discuss is that there will have to be a rate study for the water and sewer systems in order to determine what the final rates and charges are going to be, and that should be done as quickly as possible, because your first payment for the water and sewer is going to be June 1st, 2026. So the new rates and charges should be put in place once a rate, charge, or rate study is completed for the water and sewer system.
Can we have a ballpark, so we can say?
We think $6 a month, $18 on the water, and very difficult to calculate sewer. Because we only have 3,115,000 sewer connections, but everybody's uses different.
But I would just like to say, at this point in time, my firm has not been engaged in doing a rate study. We're only putting together the bond project of it. Whether or not you would like to engage us to do a rate study is a whole different service and a whole different question, which we're happy to provide, but we have not been engaged in it and have not done a rate study yet. That's not part of our engagement right now.
How long would it take you to do a rate study?
Three to four weeks, if we had all the information.
So you've been doing this for 45 years, how many rate studies have you?
I don't do the rate studies for the firm, there's another individual.
You've seen facts and figures, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, based on your opinion on a township like this, you can't give us a ballpark figure based on?
Yeah, I don't want to throw numbers out there when I haven't been involved in it. That's not what I've been engaged in yet, so, you know, I don't want to put numbers out there that I have no basis to make an estimate for. But, you know, you can look at your revenues for the water and sewer system, and you're going to add, you know, about $230,000 worth of debt service here and 315 on the other one. So if you want to eyeball it, and I'm just throwing them out there, you might be looking at 25 to 30% increase. But once again, I haven't looked at any of the numbers, that's just spitballing it.
Okay. Yeah, and not to cut Bill out of the picture, but I believe with our Waterworth Software, we have the ability to punch in our numbers, our interest rates, our time.
Oh, you and Jerry have met with them a couple times. Have they given, have they been able to give us a number on what they think?
Jerry?
What's that? Would you like to know?
You guys have met with Watersworth a couple times, and they requested some information. Were they able to kind of pinpoint a number for us?
We have figured the number at about $6 a month, $18 a quarter for water. The sewer is going to be totally different, because it's based upon sewer taps.
Okay.
So I got a question in regards to that.
Usage?
And Bill, in your expertise, have you found that it's a better way to go to put a flat rate capital charge on, so you know what your revenue is and you know what your timeframe is?
It's all over the board.
Because to do it with rates seems like a nightmare to me.
It's, it's, it's been done both ways.
Yeah.
It's many times, it's more of a political decision than a structuring decision.
But either way, it's got to be paid, so.
But once again, I haven't been involved in it, I have not been, you know, engaged to do a rate study yet, and I'm not the individual that does the rate studies.
So you don't have any advice on which is the better way to go?
Not, not.
Or you're staying diplomatic?
No, no, I mean, really, that's a decision that needs to be done. We got to, just like we did when we ran the options for you on whether you want to do a 30, 25, or 20, we've got to run different options.
Yeah.
Let's look at whether it's a capital charge, let's look if it's going to be based on usage, or let's look at a combination of capital charges and usage. And you sort of have to model it different ways and see what's the best situation for the board to look at.
My problem with usage is, you don't know what people are going to use, you know, so it's hard to, it's hard to set your numbers based on what you don't know. A capital charge is a flat fee, you know you're getting X amount per quarter per customer per year.
Yep, but it's done many different ways. If you look at throughout the system, you know, the state, various water and sewer systems, it's all over the gambit as to how things get structured.
Okay.
And once again, my thought process, and if I were to do it, I would look at all the different options. What's option A, B, C, and D? Prepare all those different options for the board to review, and then let the board make a decision. What do you prefer? That's the best way to do it.
Well, currently on the water, we're collecting, I think, $35 still, right? 30?
I was just going to ask.
So, I mean, bills could actually go down on the water, but they'll go up on the sewer.
$12. It's the sewer that's going to be difficult.
For sure.
We've done it from day one, it's.
But once again, as your municipal advisor, that is something that needs to be addressed in regards to the rates and charges. We can go out and we can sell the bonds, and we'll sell, make sure the investors know that the systems are being reviewed, rates and charges will be put in place, that'll be covering the debt service. Because even though it's the general pledge, general fund pledge of the township behind it, the plan is to pay the debt service from the water and the sewer systems. And as your advisor, I would like to know that those rates and charges are going to be in effect on a reasonable basis, so that we can make that payment June 1st, and it's interest only, so it's a smaller payment. You don't start paying principal until the next year.
Oh, '27, okay.
Correct. So the first year will be a lower payment, so we can phase in.
So you don't have an estimate on what those payments would be for year, year two with interest? Until we get a rate?
Well, I, no, that would be when you start paying principal and interest, the 230 and the 317.
Oh, that's.
That would, yeah, it's not the first year.
Okay.
That was, that's sort of your average, once you start paying principal every year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We're happy to answer anything you have on the bond structure or the bond resolution itself.
I'm just concerned about all the projects and how they're being managed, you know, we had PCE managed in the sewer on Harrison's Island, and it went from 2 million to 6, 7 million, you know, and they're handling all the contractors for this, so I'm just worried.
We have, got best numbers for construction.
And how was all the bidding, I mean, did they get a lot of bids?
Yeah, everything's already been done, all our numbers are finalized. So they can't, there's not going to be, like, they can't really adjust, because everything is finalized, we've, well, one of them tonight is to, you know, approve a contractor to do one of the projects, but all the other ones have already, are already in progress.
All right, so, we have a resolution on capital improvement bond?
You mean, do you have a motion? We don't have a motion.
Do you have a motion on it?
Thank you.
So this is like a drop dead?
Well, this is, we got to do it, I mean, if we're not going to improve the water and sewer, then we don't have to worry about it.
And all I know is that on Point Trumbull, we get a bust every other day.
Well, this is going to take care of it, we hope.
Well, keep in mind, and Bill's payable was one, the first of the contractors that are working now is Bill, so these bills are coming. We know we're going to take out a fund balance based on what Bill just told us.
Yep.
We know we have in grant money, the question is, the portion that we bond, 3.9 water, 3.6 sewer, how are we going to pay for that? Because that payment starts in a year, right? So we have to have some type of a schedule or plan in place to know we're going to, how we're going to pay for it, and our customers need to know what they're going to be paying. That's why I keep asking how we're going to handle that. And you know my opinion.
Well, we're going to have to raise the sewer rate and probably lower the water rate.
I disagree with the sewer, Mr. Supervisor, I, my opinion is, we take our total cost, the 3.69 million, we divide it across our number of sewer users, the term of the contract, 20 years with the interest rate, and whatever that number is, we divide it, and it's a flat capital charge sewer fee. We had one years ago on the sewer bill to pay for the infrastructure when it all went in, in the late 70s. It hasn't, there hasn't been one there for a long time, and I don't think it would be a big amount to pay for that.
I think it's going to be around $100.
I don't think so.
$100 a year?
That's what I figured.
Per year?
25 a quarter.
We got three, we got $315,000.
Yep.
We got 3,115 users. So go ahead and divide that out.
How many users?
3115.
3,115.
$315,000?
That's the, that's the monthly.
We're 230 on the sewer.
Oh, finger on the circle.
How many users?
Oh, I'm sorry, I used the water, I'm sorry.
How many users?
3115.
3,100.
It's $18.45 a quarter.
How much is that?
$18.45 per quarter.
Call it 20, I guess. And currently, we're paying $30 on the water, so that's, if that goes down to 18, and yeah, this 20, it's 38, so the bills would go up maybe, for the sewer users, the bills would go up eight bucks, but for the water, a lot of the people, like on Harrison's Island, we don't have sewer, so.
Or $6.15 a month.
Roughly the same as the sewer. That's what it is.
Same as the water, you mean?
That's what it is. Is that the way the board wants to do it? I think it's a good idea, even if John thought of it.
I'm fine with it.
All right, so what we have to do is decide on the capital improvement bonds, are we going to give them authority to proceed?
I have no problem with the bonding, as long as we have a plan in place on how we're going to pay for it. I think Bill's.
We just talked about it.
These guys do a great job.
Do we have a motion?
We do not have a motion.
I make a motion. Miller Canfield, Resolution 25, 2025-17, 2020, capital improvement bond, limited tax, general obligation.
I'll second.
Roll call.
I just would like to, I mean, how are we going to?
Want to tie it in with the funding?
Is that, is that what you agree on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to, we're going to move the.
So a capital charge in the water to $18? Are we actually going to reduce that capital charge to 18?
Well, I don't know that it's a capital charge right now, but we're going to set it at $18, we'll eliminate the $30, and we will.
Well, isn't the 30 a capital charge right now?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement charge? So we're going to, we're going to.
We're going to lower that, and then we're going to put a sewer charge.
We're going to adjust our capital improvement charge on the water from 30 to 18, and we're going to initiate a capital improvement charge on the sewer portion of the bill for 18?
Yes.
That's for, it was for 20.
Okay, 20?
20.
That's what we're doing?
That's, yeah, because it was, it was almost 19 bucks, 18.46, so say 20.
So 18 for water, 20 for sewer?
All right.
Approximately.
And eliminate the water debt.
Yeah, we already eliminated.
And then the rates are on our normal schedule, our water and sewer rates remain on the same schedule.
That's correct.
We called it a capital improvement instead, we changed it from debt.
All right, you want to do a roll call on that?
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
No.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Go to new business. Police promotion officer David Fararo. From officer to sergeant.
Farado.
Farado.
I will make a motion to promote.
Again, let's, let him read this letter.
Let him read the letter first.
That's why nobody likes you.
Good evening. As you all know, we do have a process in which is put forth through a union contract, and that is that officers, in order to be promoted, it goes through a testing process. Through that testing process. Through that testing process, individuals are then placed on a list as openings come available. Next person on that list, it becomes promoted because they have scored what they had to become at that place on the list. Officer Farhado was next on the list as this position came available, and I'm requesting the board's approval to go forward and promote Dave Farhado to the rank of sergeant. He has proven himself throughout the years, not only with the community, within our department, all the way across the board. Dave has spent about six years in our schools as a school resource officer, and nothing but good feedback there. He has currently been working the last four or five months with Detective Sergeant Colt before he retired, learning the ropes in the detective bureau. With that, I would like to get your approval to promote him to the rank of sergeant.
I would like to make a motion to promote Officer Dave Farhado to the rank of sergeant.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I second too.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations.
With that being said, I would like to have Dave's older brother Larry Farhado come up. He is a sergeant with Sinclair County Sheriff's Department, and pinch Dave's new badge on him. Congratulations, Dave. Well deserved.
All right, chief, we've got to hire a full-time dispatcher, Jacob Frost.
Yeah, I don't know what happened with the name here. It is Joshua Frost. Joshua has currently been working as a part-time dispatcher in City of Richmond. We have done an extensive background investigation, which we do with all our candidates. He has come very well recommended, even from where he's at right now. They hate to lose him, but they understand he wants to go into a full-time position. This is a position that's been vacant since Beverly ran out on us.
Retired, didn't work very well.
Who's gonna train him?
We were waiting to get through their next budget year here in order to go through, and, and we had sent it out, we're looking at different candidates, and with Joshua, he's got pretty much ninety percent of the training already done. So, that part of it, one, is gonna save us a lot of time, and it's gonna save us a lot of cost as well. And like I say, he does come highly recommended, and all the way across the board. Everything we've done, we have found nothing but good things back on him, so I would like to request your approval to bring him on as a full-time dispatcher and get him to start training with us.
Do we have a motion?
Standing up in the back?
What's that?
Is that him standing?
Yep.
Come on up.
Yep, there he is.
I'd like to make a motion that we hire full-time dispatcher Joshua Frost, full-time.
Support.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
And me again.
We go to one C, police body cam cloud storage.
This is something that is yearly, comes with the contract that we have with our body cams. I think it went up about approximately three-hundred dollars from last year. But this is something, this is, they do all the storage of all of our video, which is quite extensive. With the body cams being used twenty-four, seven out there, we couldn't possibly house something that, that's gonna have the hard drive space to, that would have to be allocated for this. So, therefore, it all comes with them, everything's all secured, everything's encrypted. We are the only ones in administrative rights, as far as certain people in the department that, that can go into these. They cannot be edited in any way other than by the lieutenant, and the only way they can be edited is our normal things that FOIA requires. So, any day-to-day things cannot be edited. So, all of that comes along with this, with the software program, so that's, that's all lumped into one for yearly maintenance.
And the cloud is pretty well protected, right? From hacking and...
Well, it's like anything else today. Is, is it bulletproof? No. But I think with the company that we have, they're a very reputable company, and they take all measures to make sure that everything is as secure as possible. The problem is nowadays, once you think you've got it, they hack it.
I'll make a motion that we approve body cam cloud storage for five-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents on line item two oh seven zero 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 seven six zero.
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
Okay. Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan? Yes.
Police VMware license renewal.
This is another thing that's a yearly renewal. This is got to do with our internal network and our servers. This is basically the platform that keeps those servers running and allows all of our stations and all of our networking equipment to speak to each other. So, it's one of the necessary, necessary maintenance renewals that comes with running our networks throughout the entire department.
Did it increase much from last year?
This one right here, no, actually, probably about two-hundred dollars on that one.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to VMware license renewal, three-thousand-six-hundred dollars on line item two oh seven dash oh 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 dash seven six oh dash oh oh.
Support.
Roll call.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on to one E, cemetery door.
I'm requesting that the board authorize the quote from weatherproof window and door for fifteen-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents. This door is over twenty years old, and when the spring broke, it come down and crushed the lower panel. Luckily, nobody got hurt when it did happen, but the door's seen its better days.
I'll make a motion to replace the cemetery door at the amount of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, twenty-five cents from line two oh nine zero 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 nine three three.
Support.
Roll call.
Okay. Beverly Rose?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
We go to the left station sewage pump, one F.
This is a, I've waited, it's taken four weeks for them to actually take our old pump apart, find out what was wrong with it, and come up with a repair cost of eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for that pump, which now, if it's granted, it's gonna take eight to ten weeks to get it replay, repaired. I'm looking to possibly purchase a demo pump for fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars that I can put this station back in service. I could pick the pump up tomorrow if it's granted, and the station can be back up and running on Wednesday. Otherwise, we're gonna have to wait eight to ten weeks, and running a station on one pump is a very, very chancy thing.
You don't wanna do that.
I don't wanna do that.
So, is that pump, Lance, the, the demo pump, you can use that, you're gonna put that on the shelf when the other one comes back?
No, I would just leave this one in, and then keep the other one on the shelf at that point.
You can interchange that with other stations?
No, this station is one of its own.
Oh.
This is the biggest station we have motor-wise, and it would be just for that station. I do have extra spare pumps for the other stations, but I don't have one for this one.
And the other pump's probably not real new either, right?
The other pump that's in there is, it's been a good pump, we've had no issues with it. It has been rebuilt about seven years, eight years ago, but that's out of warranty too at this point.
Yeah, it could be due as well.
But I don't like running a station on one pump because...
Well, I can tell you, you know, if the one, if the station has one pump, and that pump fails, fifteen thousand dollars is cheap insurance.
Yes. Because in order for me to run this station at that point in time, I will have to pump from that station all the way down Anchor Bay Drive to the corner in order to get it back into the interceptor so we can...
What station is this?
Station four.
Four? Yeah, you'd have a lot of people on Anchor Bay Drive upset.
Yes.
It's nine thousand just for the repair, and fifteen thousand you get a whole new, you know...
And that demo pump, it has been used, but it has full warranty on it. A new pump of that same sort is twenty-three thousand dollars.
Did they give you any type of idea, like, how many hours around the demo pump?
He did not. He did not. I think it was only used for, I believe, a week.
But they warranted the same as them?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for the repair of lift station number four sewage pump at the amount of twenty-four thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars from line five nine zero 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 nine thirty.
Support.
Roll call.
Okay, Tanya Hogan? Yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
One G, clay water system interconnect IRA, we've got a new value on that. The other value, we had a, a number that we thought we could do it for, and we can't, and we have to reduce the system. We've already voted on this, but not with the reduction in, in what we're going to get, and PCE is here to tell us about it.
So, the original estimate for this project was designed back in January of twenty-three. So, with that, you know, it took us a while to get this thing to bid for various reasons, but what I've learned from the market is that you can't keep pace with any of this material for more than thirty days. Most product manufacturers, especially for the directional drill pipe, they will not guarantee their, their prices to any contractor beyond thirty days because it's so rapidly changing. We've, we've also experienced some of that in the first large water main project on the M twenty-nine project, kinda had the same results, but most of that project's... So, with this project, the intent is this, that we're making an attempt to try and connect to an IRA system to give Clay Township a second option for water source. So, if we can imagine for a minute, we get a spill on the Canadian side of the river, and Algonac has shut down. A couple of years ago, that became a very big problem, when not only did that happen, but at the same time, the part of that plant was shut down, so they didn't have a full tower, and Clay Township almost ran out of water. You're gonna be the first one said with that. So, this plan allows you the opportunity to either close that valve to Algonac so they can support their own sulfur for that duration, and we can draw water off of IRA. We'd have to obviously come up with a contractual agreement to pay IRA for that, for that usage, right? And, and there's a meter that's gonna be set in place at, right near Zobel Court. What wound up happening with this project in the bid process is that the directional drilling price skyrocketed. So, in order to bring this back into, so, let me back up a little bit. The directional drill area was from Anchor Bay Drive to the bridge that's by Cabana Blue. It's too narrow right away, there's the marsh on the other side, all the utilities are packed into that one small spot. That area will have to be, eventually will have to be directional drill. However, there's not a lot of maintenance going on on that existing main. So, the main purpose of that directional drill was just to upsize that pipe. So, it was decided, if, if, being that the project came in way over budget, it was time for us to make an adjustment to it and just replace the section that is most important, and that's making that connection. So, from the bridge to approximately Zobel Court is gonna be replaced with a twelve-inch water main. That is the same piece that Lisa McLean has given us seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to complete. So, this total project for that portion is roughly one-point-two-three million dollars. Of, of that would be, Clay Township's portion would be somewhere around four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars in, in the end of the, by the end of the billing on the project. Lisa McLean has chosen this because she sees an opportunity to have the Algonac plant, the IRA plant, and the new Baltimore plant all in the same system with the same contamination flowing towards each plant, right? So, when Algonac has shut down for that, and let that junk go by, they can fire back up, but guess what? IRA's next on the list, and they have to shut down, right? So, now, New Baltimore supports them when that happens currently, right? And then, after that, well, after that happens, those two plants are back on, and New Baltimore's off. So, with her seeing this as a good opportunity to put money to, is for, it's helping all, more than three communities. You've got Cottraville that has a little bit of water coming from Algonac, you have Clay Township, Algonac, IRA, and New Baltimore. Now, that's a lot of people that are being, taking advantage of this system, so she said, yeah, you know what, I'm getting kicking seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars towards that project to help cover the costs for Clay Township, so they're not bearing the full cost of the project. So, my, my position to you guys is, is our recommendation to the board, and thank you for having me to, to explain some of this, is to go ahead and improve the, the full budget amount for the reduced quantity option. I think with what we've discussed with some of the budgeting things that are going on and the proposed bond issue and things like that, I think this fits better into the financial stability, and it doesn't stretch out that stuff too far. We did run a water model on not upsizing that section of eight-inch water main, and we barely saw an effect on how it affected if we were to actually run water from IRA into the, into this township, you know, where were we gonna be depleted at? And we saw very little volume, pressure loss. There's a couple of things that may have to be done in the future if, for that to work. If you went to just a, a full feed from IRA instead of a temporary, you'd have to do some other things to make that happen.
But it would work in a pinch.
It would work, it would work all day in a pinch. I mean, you're not...
What would you have to do to make it happen for a full feed?
It would be your booster station. We'd have to, because the way the water flows, flowing from Algonac, currently, the ins and outs of that pressure station is that it would be going in reverse if we went from this way. So, we, we would have to do some valving, and we'd have to coordinate an on and off procedure to switch the water flow. But if you were only gonna be on it for maybe a couple of days or, or something for another issue to be resolved, you wouldn't have to do that, but you would if you decided to go that route for long term. It would have to be...
We'd buy our water from IRA, we don't have to buy it from Algonac, do we?
You could, with that connection, you could have a choice. You could, you could use some of, you could use some of both and watch the water flow back and forth, so...
They're due to really raise their rates, from what I understand, Algonac, but how much more would it be if we're only gonna get from IRA? Like, you're telling about the booster, when you're talking like another million, or...
All I can tell you about is IRA has confirmed that they could hand, the capacity they have could handle your entire township. That's as far as I went with it. I didn't talk to them about costs or anything, because that, that's really not my game.
But I'm saying, this is temporary. You said it wouldn't work for a full-time flow. You'd have to do... You'd have to do...
Because of the configuration of our system and the valving, E'sworth or Muskrat Run and twenty-nine, our booster station handles from Muskrat Run all the way to Stier Subdivis. That's what's powered right off of the tank that's next to our building. So you're talking now of reversing the total system and feeding it from IRA, you're talking about putting our booster station out and then powering the rest of the system from IRA, which it's, you're turning the whole system around at that point in time. In an emergency purpose, that's what Eagle was looking for for the new connection, is if something did happen and if we weren't able to get enough water as compared to running the system...
Right, I get it. I'm just trying to figure out what the difference in cost was.
But I think the answer to Maureen's question is, if we wanted to make that permanent, the only thing we'd have to do additional would be valving at the booster station and the portion of water main between essentially Rose, Rose Marine and Anchor Bay Drive, upsize that. That's it.
Correct, because it's twelve-inch from there.
Then we could utilize it as a permanent feed.
Correct. It's twelve-inch from all the way there, plus the new twelve-inch that we're putting on M, M twenty-nine, you could turn around and route it the other way. Yes.
Right.
What kind of pressures do you have at IRA? As, as opposed to...
IRA's, I'm saying what is what we are. I believe they're fifty, fifty-two.
Okay, if we were to use IRA, what kind of pressure do we have at the end of the line? What's the last, uh, head in, in Algenack?
You're talking city limits is what you would be talking, or if you're gonna do the whole back country, you're talking gene out of road at that point.
All right, so we, we have enough pressure to do any expansions?
Well, I think in that scenario, the current booster station, instead of boosting the west end of the township, we'd boost the east and north end of the township.
Exactly. Your booster station would control the pressure heading to the east if you were to switch valves or sources.
Completely opposite to what it is now.
Yeah, yeah. It will not, it, it will not function for extended periods of time. We have enough looping going on where that, that's not, that's not gonna affect us as much, short term. You could go days, you know, maybe even a week. I don't even know how long we could go without having to do some kind of bypassing of the booster station so that we could get some support from it...
Correct.
To pow, to pressure up the far east side.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the Clay Water System Interconnect to IRA for one million, turn thirty-nine dollars and nine, turn three-nine-thousand-ninety-five dollars.
I just have one question on the motion. Do we want, um, because when these bills start rolling in, we're gonna need to know what line to take them from. Do we want to use, um, the capital improvement over five-thousand line and keep it consistent so when we get our reimbursement from the bonds, we know where to allocate the money to?
Yeah, we'll do it the same way we would have done if we didn't downsize it.
Okay.
Reimbursed when the bonds come in?
Mm-hmm.
Again, what portion is IRA, uh, committed to?
I'm sorry?
What portion is IRA committed to?
They're, they're not, uh, they're not committed to a portion of, of this project.
This is a different...
I was just wondering, what happens if we go down and we start supplying them water? I mean, what are we gonna do?
We start supplying them water?
We don't have water.
We could at that point if they needed it, yes.
Yeah, well, we're gonna put a, a charge in place?
Well, the meter could go both ways, but in, in an emergency purpose, Mark, I think that would be crossed at that point myself.
So there, there is a meter that's gonna be put on here. It's bi-directional. It will read both ways.
Yes.
Your current meterings that you have on M twenty-nine and on Michigan?
M twenty-nine, Michigan, Furt Road.
Yeah, those are not bi-directional.
No, they are not.
They're slow flowing, but they're not bi-directional. So if in that time, that would be another expense you would, if you were planning on like trying to say, "Well, we can sell water to IRA through Algenack," right? You put an upcharge on it, you're gonna have to be able to have flows that will read going both directions.
It does give us the option, though.
Okay.
But yes, yeah.
And at that point in time, Mark, we can do meters in where we pay from to Algenack, we can in turn reverse flows, put different meters into where they're bi-directional, and we could sell water back to Algenack if we had to.
I assume we have a letter of commitment from IRA on the connections permit, permit?
For...
There is an intergovernmental agreement between IRA and Algenack.
Connection.
Right, for emergency use.
I think we already approved this, but we're just reducing it down.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
And do I have to put, do I have to say about the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand with the grant? Because that's gonna come off the...
Yeah, I just want, along that point, Maureen, I just wanted to clarify that. So the number is one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-ninety-five dollars less the seven-fifty, correct?
Right.
So that, the, the, the portion that Clay is going to actually be responsible for is four-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-ninety-five dollars, right?
Right. So I can amend my motion to say, you know, less the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant?
Yeah, we can say with, yeah, we'll put it in there with, so...
Roll call.
So, excuse me, can you, um, I don't want you to miss the, the entire thing of this. So, um, you'll, during this award that you're making right now, you'll also have to include in your motion to, um, award to the project to FDM Contracting in the amount of one million, forty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars.
Well, we did already award a contract to them, correct?
No.
We did not state who we were awarding it to.
We awarded Paymer. This is FDM.
Okay, I amend the motion to award it to FDM Contracting.
So you're a subcontractor from PCE?
Uh, pardon me?
Are you a subcontractor from PCE?
No, I'm, I'm the project manager for PCE.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm John Monti's assistant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do a roll call.
Confirming that.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Wait, nobody seconded the motion. I'm sorry.
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to approve the Clay Water System Interconnect to IRA and approve the contract to FDM Contracting in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-ninety-five dollars less the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar direct spending grant that we received from Lisa McLean in Congress. And then Mark seconded it, right?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Jerry Golka?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
One H, discussion of OHM feasibility study. As I indicated, I brought it with me. Anybody's welcome to read through it if they'd like. Mark wants to have someone here, well, we'll get someone here for you, Mark.
Who's first? Yes, please. Presentation on this study.
We'll get someone here for you.
Thank you. So what do we find out? Is it feasible?
Is this phase one or phase two?
I don't know.
It's one and two. It tells you your options between doing a bridge and doing a ferry. It tells you all the data that you need in making a decision whether or not to do one over the other and that, uh, you know, is needed by MDOT if they're going to, uh, spend any money. They're the ones that wanted it. Now we got it for them.
In order to get grants, the feasibility study had to be completed.
Is this the only copy?
That's it. Any further discussion? Mark, I'll get the guy here next week, in two weeks.
Is that his phone number?
Yeah, if you want it.
If he's gonna come here.
I'll give you his, uh, email if you want it.
What's his last name?
Sue Kelly.
Okay.
So we're going to put the OHM back on the next agenda because somebody's gonna come present?
Yeah. Okay, we'll do one. Aye. Discuss reconciliation. Uh, Mr. DeBoyer wanted to talk about that.
So I talked to Advantage Tech, who is the IT company for the township. They handle our server. They handle, handle, um, our network provider, they're our network provider. And I asked a question after our last meeting. Is the data or whatever it is that our treasurer needs to do his reconciliation available? Where is it? How do we find it? And they told me that, um, in December, they were at the township twice, requested a meeting with Jerry, no response. They emailed him, they called him, no response. They did in their email say that they have all the data, all the documents, all the bank info, all the BSA data, um, from the former treasurer's computer in a document tab, that alls they need to do is transfer it over to the new treasurer's computer, and he has everything he needs. And there was never a response to multiple emails...
I want to name and number who you talked to.
To phone calls...
Who'd you talk to?
To personal visits. So my question is, you, everything is sitting here in the township office as we speak. Why are we spending twelve-thousand dollars with Manor Consortium?
Because of the fact that there was nobody that knew how to do it. It, it's, there's spreadsheets.
He had the chance to wave over you.
We let him, we let him finish.
Can you, okay, can you work at McDonald's as a manager and walk into a Burger King and run that operation? No.
Within a week, I'll run the damn place.
You, no, I, no.
So, so, so here's the deal. They tried to contact you multiple times.
Who'd you talk to because I...
Are you telling me it's not a true story?
I don't think it's a true story. Give me a name of who you talked to at High Tech. I wanna, I wanna talk to them.
I asked for verification and the emails were produced.
I wanna see those.
Okay, that's fine.
Do you have them right now?
No, I don't have them right now.
Why not? You're questioning me. You don't even have the information there.
So...
I'm tired of this, John. John, I'm tired of you blasting me with, and that giving me...
Last thing, how about calling you on the carpet when you're lying like a rug?
I'm not lying like a rug. Give me a name of who you talked to at High Tech. Give me a name.
It's Advantage Tech.
Our Advantage Tech.
It's Advantage Tech.
Okay, give me a name of who you talked to.
So what if I could get the guy to come in tomorrow and access the data and put it on your computer? Would that, would that verify it for you?
It would verify it. Bring him in.
Done deal.
But, but let me ask you this, John. Let me ask you this, John. Who's, who's in this office right now that can, uh, help me decipher what's on there? You got, you got spreadsheets, you got spreadsheets that somebody made...
Jerry.
That I don't understand what they're doing that, that...
Jerry, alls you need, alls you need are bank statements, checks, and you can reconcile your accounts.
No.
This isn't rocket science.
It's not that easy.
Oh, and is it?
No.
Okay.
No, why don't you, John, I want to spend a couple of...
So you're telling me that all this stuff...
John, John, I wanna spend a couple hours with you in my office, and I wanna show you. I wanna show you.
No.
And let's quit laughing out there.
No.
You don't understand. Huh? Throw these people out.
Oh, come on, come on. What is it with throw these people out all the time? For crying out loud. These people, they pay your bills.
Just saying we can't respond.
You got any more, John?
Yeah. Why aren't we paying Manor Consortium?
Well, because we voted to do that.
Why did we vote to do that?
Because it had to be done.
So, so I'll make a request that if we're gonna pay Manor Consortium because we're obligated now, we take it out of line item one-oh-one-two-five-three-seven-oh-two, which is the treasurer's salary.
Okay, any other grandstanding you gotta do?
You call it grandstanding. You know what? You need to get control of this township. You're the supervisor.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
You know, last treasurer's making eighty-thousand dollars plus benefits. I'm only making forty-four.
You know what, Jerry? I don't care, Jerry, I don't care if you don't make a nickel. You ran for this job. It's your obligation to do the job of the treasurer, and you failed miserably.
Okay.
And one thing, one thing that I didn't have anybody to, to, to go over it with me, you know what?
Jerry, we're eight months into it. How long does it take you to get it figured out?
Forget it, Jerry.
Yeah, forget it. Just let it go.
Whatever.
Let's just pay everybody to do everything.
You never wanted to come into my office to talk about things.
I don't need to come into your office. You're incompetent.
You got anything more, John?
Yeah. What's, what's this board's wishes? Are we gonna continue to pay Manor Consortium for stuff we have sitting in the township office right now that you asked for and said you couldn't do your job?
Already voted, John. You're just not happy with it.
No, because I, I don't like to waste taxpayers' dollars.
You're a guardian for the taxpayers. You are.
And you know what?
That's your job, too.
I wish you were half a guardian for the township.
All right, we'll move on to public comments. Mark, you still here?
And I'm still here, too. When I'm pretty damn sick and tired of being here, I was very hopeful that we were gonna actually have a conversation about OHM, about the illegal contract. I've given all the people here the packet that all of you got. So how in the heck is it that we still, are you talking about anything on a contract that was not legally authorized by a board? On March sixth, the Adis Law Firm produced, proposed using their services for our township. A motion was made, a vote was taken. It was one of the most confusing motions, discussions, and votes I have ever witnessed. Even the minutes don't make it clear what actually happened. So at the next meeting, I encourage this board to have a clear, open discussion on the pros and cons of having multiple law firms representing our township and then make a new motion and take a clear vote that the public can understand. Here are the cons of having multiple law firms in a township like ours. Confusion over which attorney is responsible for what, inconsistent legal advice with different firms taking different positions, and so on and so forth, especially wasting taxpayer dollars. I see no pros for a township of our size to operate this way. Also need to see the, to address the bigger picture. This board is extremely dysfunctional, and we are now facing serious financial and legal consequences with the OHM contract that was never, 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 never lawfully authorized, and we have had no bail reconciliation since November, leaving our financial records unreliable. This board has no other choice but to order a forensic audit. You're, you continue to ignore the community's voice, and our concerns are not being taken seriously. Therefore, the community needs to seriously consider a recall petition as soon as it is legally possible before even more damage occurs. Mr. Gawker, a treasurer position requires competence, which you are clearly missing. Resign or be recalled. Choice is yours. I, uh, also, at the last meeting when Mr. Cassidy had a concerned citizen removed, trustee Maureen waved to her as a police officer escorted her out. Maureen, if our recall position is successful, not only will we wave to you, we will give you a standing ovation. I have challenged, who am I? Because you are a bloody joke. You know, this, I have, I have challenged you before. I will stand here. You wanna challenge back and forth with the OHM? You wanna have a discussion? Obviously, this board won't. I will sure as heck be more than happy to take you out about this because it's not legally authorized. Got it? You got it.
I, too, am getting sick of coming to these meetings. I love staying home with the last board. You didn't even have to come here. Everything ran perfectly. The reason the last meeting was, attendance was so sparse was because everybody was at the Algenack School Board meeting trying to correct your horrible accusations, Jerry. Your accomplishments as treasurer has been to make Algenack students cry, grown men cry. Everyone, please watch the Algenack School meeting last. Trying to get the most beloved coach, Joe Garten, fired from his job because he disagrees with you. This is a despicable act. Jerry, you cannot do your job. You cannot represent the township. We, the people of Clay Township, demand that you step down immediately.
Good evening. Uh, some fire in the room tonight. I like that. First, I wanna show a little humility. I, uh, I supported Paul Cassidy in his bid for supervisor. I wanna publicly admit I was wrong. I also used to support Hyda Chair Harold Bane. I'd like to publicly admit I was wrong. I was stupid. I was not informed. Today, I'd like to discuss how Hyda compares to two other transportation authorities, uh, the Capital Area Transportation Authority and the Benzii Transportation Authority. These are both volunteer-based boards, just like Hyda. They have meetings monthly at CADA. That's the Lansing Bus Service, by, by the way. They have eight to nine people on their board. The Benzii Transportation Authority has quarterly meetings, which MCL one-twenty-four-point-five-four-six section two calls out as a law. Uh, Hyda doesn't. They have eight to nine people on their board, and the reason I bring... And the reason I bring up the number of boards is there are only five people on the board. And what I'm about to say, none of you have ever heard before. HIDA has never had a dissenting vote, from what I can find. That is... I'll do the odds. It's one in a trillion to have 30 meetings with nothing but unanimous votes. That is why appointed boards are bad. That's why you have to have people elected because otherwise you get a tyrant like Harold Bane and a bunch of stooges that just say, "Yes, yes, yes." Could you imagine if this board had nothing but unanimous votes or the zoning board or the planning commission? HIDA's the only one with unanimous votes, and that's why HIDA is a problem. Now, I'm not going to go through the AI stuff, but AI is also very suspicious. If a board has unanimous votes for five years straight, and then the island rejects the marriage, and then no meetings at all. That's very suspicious. And again, it's breaking the law. There's a problem. You need to talk about it. Harold Bane needs to reschedule HIDA meetings. Obviously, now with the Phase 2 feasibility study, I mean, Paul Cassidy must be Moses coming down from the mountain to hand us the Phase 2 feasibility, say, "Oh, blessed. We're so lucky." So, in conclusion, HIDA needs to have... They reflect poorly on Clay Township relative to the rest of the transportation authorities in the state.
Hello, Artie Bryson, 8356 South Channel. Questions. Is the OHM study, is that going to be scanned for public? It should be. It's a... Or do we have to offer each individual person?
They can send us electronic copy of the copy.
Okay, that's just one question.
They make a request for electronic copy.
All right, thank you, Mark. On the improvement bond, it was good discussion. If you guys just put the numbers in your computer program, Waterworth, you would have all the answers as far as how it would be in your rate, how it would for water and sewer. It's not that hard. It just has to be done. Let's see, the interconnect with IRA, that's a good project. Someone did a lot of thought behind that project and for all the communities. IRA has work on their end to do, which you have to make sure they complete it. And then you have to get some contracts between IRA, Elginak, and Clay on how it works if water goes the other way or if water from here goes to there. You have to have that all done before. So, time is clicking on that. Paul, I'm sorry. There's a lot of things on this agenda and every agenda. You should be the smartest person in the room on every agenda item, period. And it's obvious, you know, you're not. So, that's my comments.
Hi, Sarah Clement. I just want to make sure everyone in this room is aware and Mr. Golka is aware. When Kristi Hiltonan took office, she made $27,000 a year until she got trained and could do her job. So, we say that, oh, you took this pay cut. You took this pay cut. But you're not even doing the job. Why are we paying you at all? You've done nothing. Okay, Jerry. But you're like a little kid up here that sits here and argues with the people and throws fits in a temper tantrum. It's ridiculous. You're not doing your job. Whether you're here or you're planning parties, you're not doing the stuff that you were elected to do. And your own words are saying that you're not qualified to do it. So, let's get somebody in here that is qualified to do it. It's clearly not you. Again, Kristi Hiltonan, she never left the state of Michigan to do any trainings in eight years. Why are you to go bump elbows with people for no reason? Because you can. Let's go to North Carolina. Is it on the water, too? Sure, I'm sure it is. I would ask respectfully that you resign from your position. The whole room wants you to. You can... As Wendy said, you can do it now or you can do it in November, but it's going to happen.
Board comments, John.
Question. Have we had any letter of engagement or discussion with UHY about the start of our audit?
We have a meeting with them on Thursday at 1:00 p.m. to start the process.
Okay, good. Second question. What is the status of our reinvestments? I know specifically with water and sewer money. That's an annual thing. I don't know about the general fund money, but our investments with water and sewer are reinvested annually. Where are we at with that?
John, you should have sent me an email, and I would have had it here today.
Have you had any? Have you looked at it at all? Is there any?
I've looked at it. But I gave you the numbers because I'm going to give you the facts. Come in.
Do you know the date when it needs to be reinvested?
There's three different accounts that are invested.
Are we okay with the reinvestment period?
Yes.
We are?